I want to welcome you to the Whitehall City Council meeting for June 7, 2016, for the purpose of considering such matters that may come before it. I ask everyone to please rise for a moment of silence and remain standing for the pledge. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President?
Morrison?
Here.
Daley?
Here.
Rodriguez? Gray?
Here.
Coniston? Here. Hannah? Stanley?
Yes. Mr. President? President Gray also.
I'm here.
Mr. President? Yes. And move to excuse the absent members.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Bailey, the second by Ms. Coniston, to excuse the absent members. Mr. President, please call the hall.
Morrison?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston? Yes. Stanley?
Yes.
All righty, very good. Next is our approval of minutes for May 17, 2016. Mr. President, please.
President Gray would like to make a motion to approve the May 17 minutes.
Second. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please call the hall.
Morrison?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston? Yes. Stanley?
Yes.
All righty, very good. Next is our approval of minutes for May 17, 2016. Mr. President, please.
President Gray would like to make a motion to approve the May 17 minutes.
Second. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please call the hall.
Morrison?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston? Yes. Stanley?
Yes.
All righty, very good. Next is our approval of minutes for May 17, 2016. Mr. President, please.
President Gray would like to make a motion to approve the May 17 minutes.
Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please call the hall.
Morrison?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston? Yes. Stanley?
Yes.
All righty, very good. Next is our approval of minutes for May 17, 2016. Mr. President, please.
President Gray would like to make a motion to approve the May 17 minutes.
Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please call the hall.
Morrison?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston? Yes. Stanley?
Yes.
All righty, very good. Next is our approval of minutes for May 17, 2016. Mr. President, please.
President Gray would like to make a motion to approve the May 17 minutes.
Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please call the hall.
Morrison?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston? Yes. Stanley?
Yes.
All righty, very good. Next is our approval of minutes for May 17, 2016. Mr. President, please.
President Gray would like to make a motion to approve the May 17 minutes.
Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please call the hall.
Morrison?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston? Yes. Stanley?
Yes.
All righty, very good. Next is our approval of minutes for May 17, 2016. Mr. President, please.
President Gray would like to make a motion to approve the May 17 minutes.
Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please call the hall.
Morrison?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston? Yes. Stanley?
Yes.
All righty, very good. Next is our approval of minutes for May 17, 2016. Mr. President, please.
President Gray would like to make a motion to approve the May 17 minutes.
Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please call the hall.
Morrison?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston? Yes. Stanley?
Yes.
All righty, very good. Next is our approval of minutes for May 17, 2016. Mr. President, please.
President Gray would like to make a motion to approve the May 17 minutes.
Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please call the hall.
Morrison?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston? Yes. Stanley?
Yes.
All righty, very good. Next is our approval of minutes for May 17, 2016. Mr. President, please.
President Gray would like to make a motion to approve the May 17 minutes.
Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please call the hall.
Morrison?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston? Yes. Stanley?
Yes.
All righty, very good. Next is our approval of minutes for May 17, 2016. Mr. President, please.
President Gray would like to make a motion to approve the May 17 minutes.
Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please call the hall.
Morrison?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston? Yes. Stanley?
Yes.
All righty, very good. Next is our approval of minutes for May 17, 2016. Mr. President, please.
President Gray would like to make a motion to approve the May 17 minutes.
Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please call the hall.
Morrison?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston? Yes. Stanley?
Yes.
All righty, very good. Next is our approval of minutes for May 17, 2016. Mr. President, please.
President Gray would like to make a motion to approve the May 17 minutes.
Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please call the hall.
Morrison?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston? Yes. Stanley?
Yes.
All righty, very good. Next is our approval of minutes for May 17, 2016. Mr. President, please.
President Gray would like to make a motion to approve the May 17 minutes.
Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes. Mr. President, please. The motion by Ms. Coniston, the second by Mr. Gray for approval of the May 17, 2016 minutes.[796.14]
I would just like to ask for favorable consideration of ordinances fifty-six and fifty-seven, also of Resolution Thirty-seven, which is C-MAC. The reason for that is that this is our regulation to traffic lights, and what C-MAC is, it's to mitigate congestion and also improve air quality. If we have traffic lights that are operated by fiber rather than just timers, we'll be able to know exactly when anything can be changed. People can get back to their homes quicker, thus not having as much fumes and pollution in there. Also, it will help traffic congestion and hopefully alleviate impers sometimes when that traffic congestion happens. So basically, what this is, is I would like to have favorable consideration of Resolution Thirty-seven, also Resolution Thirty-eight, which Resolution Thirty-eight deals with, year before last, the city received one million dollars for a dark fiber network sharing agreement in Hanahexway in Reynoldsville. Currently, we're coming down from Hanah onto Milton Road, and if we can perturb it well, we can take and overlap our fiber line areas, which will definitely speed the process along because then we won't have to contract with every entity, A.T.N.T. and all those other entities. So that's what we're asking council for, and I'm asking for consideration of Resolution Thirty-eight unfortunately. Also, some of the things that I've been working with lately, I'm starting working on the budget for two thousand and seventeen. I'll be meeting with our liability insurance carrier to talk about renewal coming up. It's not till October that we start talking down, they should, you know, four months in advance, and that's always a lot of fun. But anyway, it's definitely necessary, and we do it to protect the city in the essence. So those are just some of the things I've been doing today. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. All right, next is our city attorney, Mr. Michael Bibens.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, members of the public, thank you for coming out tonight. The only official report from the city attorney's office is, it was odd, but in the month of May, we only had eighty-six new cases filed in our mayor's court in the month of May, which is a very low number, especially compared to last year, I believe. Last year in May, there were almost two hundred cases, but this year, I guess we're sending out the message, don't, don't commit crime in Whitehall, which is great. So at least out of those eighty-six cases, you'll be pleased to know that only thirty-four of those were actual Whitehall residents. So we're still trending pretty consistent with respect to about twenty-five percent of all cases filed in mayor's court are actual Whitehall residents. That's the official report from the city attorney's office. Unofficially, I had the opportunity, and Chairperson Daley as well as Director Underwood had the opportunity to do a ride-along with Officer Holyfield for the Whitehall Police Department, and it was supposed to be an hour, and I ended up spending almost six hours. And it was an amazing experience, and that, that experience, one, we, we went on runs where we were able to help, successfully helped two individuals that had attempted suicide. And to see the touch, and to see the compassion, and to see the, the focus from our public safety is commendable. My, my heart was just proud to be there, to ride along, and they actually let me go inside the homes, and I, I, one person actually thought I was a detective, and I just ran with it. So, so that was, that was fun. And then lastly, unofficially, if you see a dark cloud above my head in the, in the next coming weeks, I'm sad to report my daughter will be going away to college early next week, so we'll be traveling to Virginia to drop her off early. I don't know where she, she could have left in August, but she wanted to leave in June, and so she's leaving in June, and I guess she got that overachievement from her mother.
She's the one with the, the happy cloud above the, right?
But that dark cloud will be above my head in the next few weeks, so until I get used to it, I'm looking a little sullen and a little bulldogish. That's my big girl, she'll be going away to college early, and I just am so enthused about her, and you all have license at any time in Facebook, even you public, in Facebook or whatever, if she posting things, nature, you have the license and the authority to let her know that that's not what she's supposed to do while away in college, so thank you very much for your time.
It's village, right?
Yes, it does.
Okay, next we have our city auditor, Mr. Dan Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report tonight.
All right, that brings us to our director of public safety, Mr. Chuck Underwood.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm the council, I have no official report either.
All right, thank you.
I am pleased to know that our city attorney was impressed by Officer Holyfield.
And finally, we have our treasurer, Mr. Steve Potts.
Can we intentionally skip development?
Well, there's no development director sitting there.
Well, you know, she was just going, okay. For me, it was president, thank you.
I'm sorry.
No.
All right. All right, there, we've had no official reports filed in the council office since our last meeting, and under communications petitions and claims, we've had the two items listed on our agenda this evening, and we, we have received two additional items since then, and all of a sudden, I'm drawing a blank here. Are these two items? Okay. Never mind. Next is our verification of comments. Ms. Freymark, please call the hall for whether each member of council has given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting and including any act of the legislation.
Morrison.
Yes.
Daley.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston. Yes. Daley.
That brings us to our ordinances and resolutions this evening. Under third reading, we have none. Under second reading, we begin with Resolution Thirty-two, two thousand and sixteen. It's adopting the tax budget for the city of Whitehall, Ohio, for the fiscal year beginning January one, two thousand and seventeen, and submitting same to the county auditor and declaring an emergency, and that resolution is being read by Title Holmer. The only item we have under second reading. Under first reading, we had ordinance fifty-five, two thousand and sixteen. It's authorizing adoption of the May two thousand and sixteen replacement pages to the certified ordinances of the city of Whitehall and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce ordinance fifty-five, two thousand and sixteen, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
The motion by Ms. Morrison, the second by Ms. Coniston, for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance fifty-five, two thousand and sixteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Freymark, please call the hall.
Morrison.
Yes.
Daley.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston. Yes. Daley.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance fifty-five, two thousand and sixteen.
Mr. President, I move to adopt ordinance fifty-five, two thousand and sixteen.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, the second by Ms. Coniston, for adoption of ordinance fifty-five, two thousand and sixteen. Ms. Freymark, please call the hall.
Morrison.
Yes.
Daley.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston. Yes. Daley.
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-five, two thousand and sixteen has been adopted. Next, we have ordinance fifty-six, two thousand and sixteen. It's affirming the designation of the Whitehall Community Improvement Corporation as an agency of the city under Ohio Revised Code one seven two four point one zero, and authorizing the execution of an agreement and plan for industrial, commercial, distribution, and research development, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce ordinance fifty-six, two thousand and sixteen, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. The motion by Mr. Morrison, the second by Mr. Gray for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance fifty-six, two thousand and sixteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Freymark, please call the hall.
Morrison.
Yes.
Daley.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston. Yes. Daley.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance fifty-six, two thousand and sixteen.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of ordinance fifty-six, two thousand and sixteen.
Second. The motion by Mr. Morrison, the second by Mr. Gray for adoption of ordinance fifty-six, two thousand and sixteen. Ms. Freymark, please call the hall.
Morrison.
Yes.
Daley.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston. Yes. Daley.
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-six, two thousand and sixteen has been adopted. Next is ordinance fifty-seven, two thousand and sixteen. It's appropriating monies on deposit in Whitehall Municipal Public Improvement Tax Intermittent Equivalent Fund to be used to fund a portion of the cost of acquiring a property known as the Commons at Royal Landing and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being read by Title Holmer. Next, we have ordinance fifty-eight, two thousand and sixteen, providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum amount of four million, five hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of paying the cost of acquiring the real and personal property within the city generally known as the Commons at Royal Landing as part of a project to redevelop that property with a mix of commercial and residential uses, all in support of economic development, creating or preserving jobs and employment opportunities, and providing housing within the city, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce ordinance fifty-eight, two thousand and sixteen, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Morrison, the second by Ms. Coniston, for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance fifty-eight, two thousand and sixteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Freymark, please call the hall.
Morrison.
Yes.
Daley.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston. Yes. Daley.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance fifty-eight, two thousand and sixteen.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of fifty-eight, two thousand and sixteen.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Morrison, the second by Ms. Coniston, for adoption of ordinance fifty-eight, two thousand and sixteen. Ms. Freymark, please call the hall.
Morrison.
Yes.
Daley.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston. Yes. Daley.
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-eight, two thousand and sixteen has been approved. Next, we have ordinance fifty-nine, two thousand and sixteen, approving and making a supplemental appropriation of seventeen thousand dollars from unappropriated monies in the Community Development Trust Fund to the Home Reinvestment Program account, and declaring an emergency. That is being read by Title Holmer. Next is Resolution Thirty-seven, two thousand and sixteen. It's authorizing the mayor to file an application for federal congestion mitigation and air quality improvement funding, and committing the necessary non-federal match and stating the assurance to complete the project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution Thirty-seven, two thousand and sixteen, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Gray, the second by Ms. Coniston, for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution Thirty-seven, two thousand and sixteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Freymark, please call the hall.
Morrison.
Yes.
Daley.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston. Yes. Daley.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution Thirty-seven, two thousand and sixteen.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gray, the second by Ms. Coniston, for adoption of Resolution Thirty-seven, two thousand and sixteen. Ms. Freymark, please call the hall.
Morrison.
Yes.
Daley.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston. Yes. Daley.
Yes.
Resolution Thirty-seven, two thousand and sixteen has been adopted. Our next item is Resolution Thirty-eight, two thousand and sixteen. It's authorizing the mayor to enter into a fiber overlap agreement with White Open West and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution Thirty-eight, two thousand and sixteen, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Gray, the second by Ms. Coniston, for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution Thirty-eight, two thousand and sixteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Freymark, please call the hall.
Morrison.
Yes.
Daley.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston. Yes. Daley.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution Thirty-eight, two thousand and sixteen.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gray, the second by Ms. Coniston, for adoption of Resolution Thirty-eight, two thousand and sixteen. Ms. Freymark, please call the hall.
Morrison.
Yes.
Daley.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston. Yes. Daley.
Yes.
Resolution Thirty-eight, two thousand and sixteen has been adopted. This is the last item of the session we have this evening. That brings us to our second opportunity for poll public. Everyone would like to come forward? We will have up to three minutes. All right, we'll move on to community day board.
Good evening, council. I just wanted to tell you a little bit about the home improvement, you know, applications closed last week, and the pleasure of being with all the one home improvement recipients today. So we are so happy to be able to find some free homeowners, and they're fantastic. So that's what we're saying, hoping for a good day, be able to tell people what's happening. As parents dated, we are in a busy season. So I do want to tell you on Wednesday, June twenty-second, just a couple of weeks from now, our TedX Berlin Road event is coming. I think you've always been interested in it. We really hope you can come. What Ted is, it stands for technology and community design, but that doesn't really matter. Mostly what it means is people get up on stage and tell their stories, and it's all about making things. And this very topic is perception, and it's, I, I have gotten to listen to all of our speakers, and they are pretty amazing, and I really hope that maybe people can join us if possible, because it will leave you with a different perception. So I do hope you can join us, it's going to be a really great event. And then, of course, we have this wonderful, huge holiday coming up on the first of July, and it's kind of rattling through everything. Up here, I put together a comprehensive list of all of the activities, that includes city activities and WCCA activities, and so there's also a downloadable version of that on our website, if you'd like to push out, so you can feel free to take a copy with you today.
I actually cast those out also with Music in the Park.
Yeah, I saw that you posted it, too, so thank you. I just, I thought it would help putting everybody...
By the way, Music in the Park is going on, and you have one thing out to, that is such a funny event, such a fun pre-event. My band, I mean, it's, it was a good time Sunday. Love music. Yeah, we were...
Questions, Dave?
Well, you're right. Great.
Anything else for community day board? Well, we'll move on to poll council, and we'll begin with Ms. Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to thank everyone for showing up this evening, and appreciate you coming. I'm glad you're here.
Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President, and also thank you all for coming out. Mayor, I appreciate you looking into some assistance for sidewalk repairs, which is something we'll be talking about next week. Let's give them a little bit of luck.
Mr. Gray.
Just want to thank you everyone for coming, and Molly, thank you for your insight, and I'm sure it's a good program and helps a lot of kids. Have a good evening.
Ms. Coniston.
Thank you all for coming. Molly, what a wonderful program, and somebody named CASA, how perfect and fitting. So, and thank you for the invitation. I see you're a resident in here, and it's very, very nice. See you in a couple of weeks.
Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank everybody for coming out this evening. Enjoy the rest of your week, and thank you.